We'll begin tonight's meeting with the invocation by Councilor McLean, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, bless us councils, we make the decisions for the good of our fair city, guide our administration as they bring the issues at hand for council to approve. I ask for the sick to be healed and the hungry fed and the cold be filled with your warmth. Bring us a little sunshine and warming temperatures and send the snow north. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Gordon?
Here.
Mr. McLean?
Here.
Mr. Lowe?
Here.
Mr. Tevin?
Here.
Ms. Adams?
Here.
Mr. Glenn?
Here.
Mrs. Miles?
Here.
And Mr. Nixon?
Here. Are there any amendments to tonight's agenda?
Mr. President?
Mr. McLean?
I want to remove Mark Miller from the privilege of floor and we want to add a Finance Committee report from reported official.
Second. The motion, the second, is to amend tonight's agenda by deleting Mark Miller from the privilege of the floor and by adding the committee report from the Finance Committee. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. The consent calendar.
Mr. President?
Mr. Tevin?
I move that item A of the consent calendar be received, filed, and approved, and item B be received and filed.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive, file, and approve item A and receive and file item B. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Geiger?
Just to point clarification, just in minutes from the last meeting regarding Communication Number 18, a question was presented because Ms. Adams had made a motion before legislation would be prepared for that communication, and it turns out, no legislation was required, therefore, no legislation was prepared. I just wanted to make sure that was clear for Sally to put it in this meeting minutes.
What did you say?
On number 18?
Communication.
Communication 18 from last meeting.
Says, yeah, the motion, that the communication be received, filed, and the law director authorized to prepare the necessary legislation.
Right.
If any, there was none.
Correct. But the question was asked, why there wasn't any, so I just wanted to make sure the record was clear that none was needed.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number one.
From the Director of Utilities regarding legislation to advertise and enter into contract for sanitary lift station improvements.
Mr. President?
Mr. McLean?
I move that Communication Number One be received and filed.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number One. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number two.
From the Director of Utilities regarding legislation to amend the sewer rates.
Mr. President?
Mr. McLean?
I move that Communication Number Two be received, filed, and approved.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive, file, and approve Communication Number Two. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
On this communication, it was Utility Department request that this be referred to the Utility Committee and for further review and clarification. I'd like to ask the Chairman of that committee if, in fact, he's going to do that or let it stand as.
Mr. President?
Mr. McLean?
You know, we've gone through this last year in numerous meetings after meeting, and what we're trying to do is get up to parity with Allen County, and, you know, I asked them at that time if they would take small incremental steps instead of a large step, and this is part of that. I mean, if we want to have an explanation again, I'd be happy to bring it back up, but I thought all members, except the new people with council, have been to those meetings and have heard the walk and the talk, so unless you want me to, I won't do it. If you want me to, I will. And I need to amend my motion.
Is there a need for it to go to committee?
I don't have a problem with it not going to committee. If the new members are comfortable and understand what we've been through and what the Chairman has just explained, that's what I want to.
You're welcome to call me if you have questions. I'll be happy to go through the correlation of the steps we've taken to get this far.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So your motion, so I restated, was to receive, file, and authorize legislation.
And authorize legislation.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number three.
From the Director of Utilities regarding legislation to amend Ordinance 9412, a contract within land waters.
Mr. President?
Mr. McLean?
I move that Communication Number Three be received and filed.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number Three. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number four.
From Chief Martin regarding legislation for dispersment of funds from the Law Enforcement Trust Fund.
Mr. President?
Mr. Gordon?
I move that Communication Number Four be received and filed.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number Four. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number six.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to amend the contract with Sperry On Services.
Mr. President?
Mr. Glenn, before you make your motion, I misstated it. It's Communication Number Five. Clerk read the correct caption. Mr. Glenn?
I'm on to Communication Number Five, receiving and filing legislation on tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number Five. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number six.
From the Finance Director regarding legislation for the 2014 budget.
Mr. President?
Mr. Tevin?
I move that Communication Number Six be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number Six. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number seven.
From the Finance Director regarding legislation for appropriation amendment.
Mr. President?
Mr. Tevin?
I move that Communication Number Seven be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number Seven. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number eight.
From Chief Heffner regarding legislation to enter into a contract with Bailey's Equipment and Apparel.
Mr. President?
Mr. Gordon?
I move that Communication Number Eight be received and filed.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number Eight. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number nine.
From Chief Heffner regarding legislation to enter into a contract with Rush Truck Center.
Mr. President?
Mr. Gordon?
I move that Communication Number Nine be received and filed.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number Nine. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number 10.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to enter into a contract with West Erie Realty Solutions.
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I move that Communication Number 10 be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number 10. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number 11.
From the Director of Public Works requesting legislation to enter into a contract with Henry W. Bergman.
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I move that Communication Number 11 be received and filed, and the law director be authorized to prepare the necessary legislation.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number 11 and to authorize the law director to prepare the necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number 12.
From the Director of Public Works requesting legislation to enter into a contract with Helms &amp; Sons Excavating.
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I move that Communication Number 12 be received and filed, and the law director be authorized to prepare the necessary legislation to comply with the request.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number 12 and to authorize the law director to prepare the necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. There are no petitions this evening. Reports of officials, Christine Pleva, with the Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Thank you, President Nixon and members of City Council. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you this evening, as I do each February, to give you a summary of our annual report for the previous year in terms of the process of tourism and the numbers of tourism and how tourism fared in Lima Allen County for the previous year. Just kind of as a summary, the CBB, or the Convention and Visitors Bureau, is a tourism destination marketing organization. Our goal is to promote tourism in our area, to get people to come in, spend their dollars here, and thus have a positive impact on the economy and our community. We are one of those businesses in this community whose goal is to raise revenue for our community. So we take our job very seriously and we take tourism very seriously. We work to do a number of things in order to get tourism to keep growing in Lima Allen County. We have a number of strategies we follow, and all of those are in your report that I have provided for each of you this evening. I'd like to just highlight a couple of those throughout my time with you this evening, if I could. One thing I wanted to mention, however, during my report last year, I had mentioned to you that we were going to be trying to focus on getting more group event business here, comprised of groups with a larger attendance, because our concern going into 2013 was the I-75 construction, especially as it applied to the entrance into the city on State Route 117 and 309, that exit, and the possible lane closures and things like that through the year. So we had been working up until that point to try to get a number of larger groups to come into our community, to try to offset, which we believe would have been, the loss of the individual leisure traveler coming into town. Well, though we were very, very concerned on what the numbers would look like, I'm happy to say that as we wrapped up 2013, it turned out to be a very, very good year. In 2013, the CBB recorded 975 groups coming into our community, holding events here. These groups had an attendance of 351,606 people and an estimated dollars generated of $56.2 million. I think it's important to note that these numbers reflect only group business. These are not individual business travelers coming into town, nor are there leisure travelers coming in. When we look at those numbers and what was done throughout the year, tourism in 2013 was the highest it's ever been, even with the construction, and tourism was up 3% for the year. The number of groups that came in, these 975 groups, represented a 3.4% increase over 2012. It was a 20.4% increase in the attendance with these groups. So what we were trying to do, as I mentioned, getting bigger groups to come in, we were able to do that, so I'm very, very happy to report that it generated an extra 20.4% of an increase. Estimated dollars generated by these groups increased 17%. So we were happy to also be able to report that to you. We have recorded 27, or, excuse me, 37 conventions that came into our community this last year. Those conventions generated $3.3 million alone, and those number of conventions increased 5.7% over 2012. Also, meetings held in our community generated another $3.1 million. We had 166 special events coming into town in 2013. These comprised of things such as dog shows, craft shows, bridal shows, things like that that we had coming into town. And these 166 special events generated $39 million, which is an increase of $4.8 million over the previous year. So again, there were larger attendants with those groups as well. We had a number of trade shows also that had a big impact on business this year and a big impact with hotels and hotel stays. The trade shows generated $3.6 million. And then, again, in 2013, as was the same in 2012, tournaments were very big in the community this last year. The tournaments alone generated $6.1 million. So what we do is, when we look at these numbers and when we look each year at how we're going to work for the next year, and these things are listed in your report for you, we look at all the strategies we need to follow based on our strategic planning and things like that to say, okay, what do we need to do and what things do we have to utilize that are available in marketing to get groups and leisure travelers into our community? One thing we did this year, which we do every year, but this is one of the, we've done more this year than we ever had, is attended and exhibited a lot of conferences, trade shows, and exhibits. We went to 28 conferences, trade shows, and exhibitions, including those in Michigan, Pennsylvania, Tennessee, North Carolina, Ontario, Indiana, and several shows in Ohio, where we went to promote, to network, and to tell everybody why they need to bring their groups and events into Lima Allen County. We worked with a number of meeting planners at these shows and events, trying to get them to come to our community, willing to show them around, take them around, have them see what we can do to offer them great space here in our community to bring their event to. Another thing we did, which we do every year, but again, it was a record year for us, we spent a lot of our dollars on advertising and promotional marketing. We advertised in over 144 state, regional, and national publications. That was a 3.4%, or, excuse me, 13.4% increase over the previous year. We processed 885 requests for Allen County tourism information just from trackable CBB advertising in five publications last year. Those publications were Discover Ohio Magazine, Ohio Magazine, Best Driving Vacations Magazine, Long Weekends Magazine, and Buckeye Line. And those, again, alone, generated over 800 responses with people wanting information about coming to the community. Along with those, however, we also received close to 1,219 other requests for information about people wanting to hold events here. We completed 217 sales and promotion calls, and we also processed and fulfilled 4,458 convention information bags with people wanting information after they had already come into town. One thing we had spoken about in previous years when I've been here is told you about our focus on social media and also on website, our website redesign, and using our website to do marketing to increase tourism in the community. I can tell you that, again, in 2013, we had a really good year with that. We registered 5.48 million information requests through our website, and we had 4,414,377 pages viewed on our website for tourism in Allen County. So we were very, very happy. There are a number of other things, of course, listed in your books. I tried to be as explicit as I can in how we use lodging tax dollars to promote marketing, to promote our marketing efforts and get people to come to our community, and we will continue to do that. I know there's a lot of material there, but if you have any questions now or if I can ever answer questions in the future, be very, very happy to. So I thank you for your time this evening, just to give you a little synopsis of what we've been doing. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next is Chief Martin.
Mr. President, Council, thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to take just a few moments today to update the council on information that I first gave, beginning back in November of last year, regarding our UCR crime numbers going back to 2008. At that time, obviously, we did not have all the final numbers for 2013, and now that they are in, I wanted to bring everyone up to date. So prior to council beginning, I distributed three items to each member of council. The first one is a UCR Part I Crimes comparison, and I will say that actually, just sitting in my seat over here, I did find a typo. If you look down at the very last line, the comparison with 2008 under total offenses, over into the percentage change, I have a 28.8% reduction. That is actually a typo. It is only 27.8%, although I have to say that I feel pretty good being able to stand up here and say only 27.8% reduction in that period of time in UCR Part I Crimes. If you look down through the entire list, though, I have the comparison with 2012, and as you can see, first of all, under total offenses, it's nearly a 10% reduction, and in violent offenses, we saw a 21.5% reduction from last year. Also, if you look down at all the individual offense classifications, you can see that each one of them saw a reduction, with the exception of motor vehicle theft, which did in fact see an increase from 80 actual offenses to 95 from 2012 to 2013. We are currently looking at why that is. Conventional wisdom is that auto theft should be going down because the anti-theft devices that are installed by the manufacturers of vehicles are getting better and are improving. So we're really not sure why that increase is. We are looking at that, and we will continue to watch that as the year goes ahead. The next item down, then, was an update from the slide that was presented to council back in November, showing the crime trend since 2008. And again, now, this one has it accurate as the 27.8% decrease. And then the very next item below that, again, as I mentioned back in November, I tend to like to be able to see pictures of things. I like to look at things visually, and so I updated the graph, which shows that downward trend going back to 2008. And so, again, this is very good news. I wanted to update the council and the community on what is happening, and although I do not believe that we can just, as I said before, ever rest on our laurels, we have to continue to look for ways to bring those numbers down even more, but it is encouraging to see that those numbers are coming down, and I hope that it also encourages the community to continue to call us when they think something's wrong. Because, again, there's a number of factors, as I stated back in November, that I believe contributes to this. Certainly, community involvement is a very significant factor, as well as others that I've spoken about before. So unless there are any questions, I thank you.
Mr. President? Mr. Lowe?
Yes, Chief, this is good to see. One question or statement that I would like to make is, I've had individuals say that they have called the police station to make a report over the phone, and sometimes, these reports were made at peak times during the day. I know that you have came to neighborhood associations and stated that they could pretty much do a report over the phone with the desk officer. Are those calculated in this?
Yes.
With the officer just going out?
Yes, those reports that are taken over the phone are processed in the same way as if the officer takes them in person, and they do get added into the UCR crime stats.
Okay. And real quickly, could you tell people quickly, if you could, the proper procedure when calling to the desk officer about getting a, I don't know if they want to call it a service number or a call number? Because I went into an incident where I told the lady what to do, and she wasn't giving it, but then when I called, she was given one, and I don't want that to happen to anyone else.
Well, I would say, first of all, my recommendation is that if somebody has a need for police service, obviously, if it's an emergency, please call 911. If it's a non-emergency, call our dispatch center at 419-227-4444, and they will direct the call appropriately. If they get transferred, well, whether they get transferred to the desk officer or if they get transferred, or, excuse me, rather, an officer gets dispatched out to their location, either way, if they do not believe that they've received the appropriate level of police service that they should have received, then I would ask that their next step be to call back into our dispatch center and demand to speak to a supervisor.
Okay, let me clarify what I'm saying. Are they allowed to ask for a service call number at the time after they make the report or over the phone?
Yes, yes, and that should actually be given to them. If the desk officer doesn't have it immediately available, where they'd have to wait until they can get it generated, they could get the, which actually, they should already have a callback number anyway, for the report that they're completing, and they can call the person back then and give them that number when it's available.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Next, reports of committees, Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of council have all received a copy. The Public Works Committee met on February 3 at 5:30 in council chamber. We had two subjects in committee. One was the Moore Obligation of the Freeman Claim, and the second subject was review of capital projects for 2014 involving streets, parks, buildings, and stormwater. I would just like to make note that under the Moore Obligation discussion, a motion was made to recommend payment be made to council, to have council pay for the deductible under the Moore Obligation. That legislation is on tonight's agenda. The review of capital projects for Public Works required no action by the committee. It was, as it stated, just a review. Mr. President, I move that the report of the Public Works Committee be received, filed, and approved.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive, file, and approve. The committee report is submitted by Counselor Adams. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. The Finance Committee report.
The Finance Committee met three consecutive evenings, January 21, 22, and 23, to review the 2014 budget for the City of Lima. There were two public hearings held, one at 5:30 January 21 and one at 5:30 January 23. All council members have a copy of the committee report. I would move that this report be received, filed, and approved.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive, file, and approve the committee report as submitted by Counselor Tevin. Is there any discussion? I'll say this now rather than when we do the ordinance, but I want to thank you and the other committee members for your hard work on this budget. It's been, we say this a lot, but it's a little easier to do because of the pain and cuts and modifications and moderation that we've done in the past, so it's a lot easier. We're not facing some of the challenges and having to make emergency cuts like a lot of other cities did the last couple of years and some are still doing this year. So I just want to thank you and the other committee members for your work on the budget.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Ordinance 1214.
This is the second reading authorizing the mayor to enter to a contract with Sperry On Inc.
Mr. President?
Mr. Tevin?
I move that Ordinance 12-14 be passed on its second reading.
Second. The motion, the second, is to pass Ordinance 1214 on its second reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
No.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
No.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
And Mr. Gordon?
No.
Ordinance 1214 will be placed on third reading because it failed to gain the 2/3 majority for passage this evening. Ordinance 3414.
Establishing the budget for the City of Lima, Ohio for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2014.
Mr. President?
Mr. Tevin?
I move that Ordinance 34-14 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion, the second, is to pass Ordinance 3414 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?[1731.87] Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
And Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Ordinance 3414 has been passed on its first reading by an 8 to 0 vote. Ordinance 3514.
Amending the 2014 annual budget.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tevin.
I move that ordinance 35-14 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 3514 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lo.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
And Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Ordinance 3514 has been passed on its first reading by an 8 to 0 vote. Ordinance 3614.
Granting Northside Lima permission to maintain and use estates for the Art Space Rally in the Square Series.
Mr. President.
Mr. Lo.
I move that ordinance 3614 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 3614 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lo.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
And Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Ordinance 3614 has been passed on its first reading by an 8 to 0 vote. Ordinance 3714.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Sperry on each to provide home loan originator services.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Miles.
I move that ordinance number 37-14 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 3714 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lo.
No.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
No.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
And Mr. Gordon.
No.
Ordinance 3714 has been placed, did not get the 2/3 vote necessary to be passed on its first reading, and will be placed on second reading. Ordinance 3814.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Bailey's Equipment and Apparel.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move that 3814 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 3814 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lo.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
And Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Ordinance 3814 has been passed on its first reading by an 8 to 0 vote. Ordinance 3914.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Rush Truck Center.
I move that ordinance number 3914 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 3914 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lo.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
And Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Ordinance 3914 has been passed on its first reading by an 8 to 0 vote. Ordinance 4014.
Authorizing payments from the Law Enforcement Trust Fund for police K-9 and related services and equipment.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move that ordinance 4014 be passed on its first reading.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 4014 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I have a question. Caption says, "For a police K-9 and related services and equipment." Under the first whereas, we are detailing two licenses for Lexus Nexus for two years, which I believe is software. Two licenses for X1 Social Discovery software, and for an Omovore field kit with qualified workstation. Do we have a mix-up?
We do.
Or are those all related to K-9?
No, 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 no. We actually had some questions on the numbers that we got straight, and we missed the caption. The caption is incorrect. The body of the ordinance is incorrect.
Okay.
So I'd suggest the ordinance be amended to say authorize an ordinance for payments from the Law Enforcement Trust Fund, period, and delete the rest of that.
Okay.
Say that again.
In the caption, we're going to strike the words, "for a police K-9 and related services and equipment."
Thank you.
So the caption is, "An ordinance authorizing," I'm going to make this motion that we amend the document and allow the law director to provide a clean copy.
And I'll second it.
And the amendment would be as such that the caption be, strike the words, "for a police K-9 and related services and equipment." I got everything in there, Tony, that you need to do the clean copy and all that jazz?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. McLean, for the second. Any discussion on that motion? Mr. Lo.
Yes, Mr. President. I was understanding that you just purchased a K-9.
That's my point. And it's, the body of the ordinance is computer equipment, okay?
Period.
Period. So it's still being purchased with the Law Enforcement Trust Fund.
Okay.
So the correct caption reads, "An ordinance authorizing payments from the Law Enforcement Trust Fund." Period.
Four dogs, no more.
That's what we just went through, okay?
Okay, four dogs.
Any other discussion on that motion to amend? All those in favor of the motion to amend signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Mr. Gordon, does your motion still stand then to pass ordinance 4014 on its first reading?
Yes.
And does the second still stand?
Yes.
Mr. McLean, thank you. Any discussion on that?
No.
Good. I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lo.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
And Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Ordinance 4014 has been passed on its first reading by an 8 to 0 vote, as amended. Ordinance 4114.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Azteca Systems.
Mr. President. Mr. McLean. I move that ordinance 4114 be passed on its first reading. Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 4114 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lo.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
And Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Ordinance 4114 has been passed on its first reading by an 8 to 0 vote. Ordinance 4214.
Amending ordinance 9412.
Mr. President. Mr. McLean. I move that ordinance 4214 be passed on its first reading. Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 4214 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lo.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
And Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Ordinance 4214 has been passed on its first reading by an 8 to 0 vote. Ordinance 4314.
Authorizing the mayor to apply for, receive, administer, and expend Clean Ohio funds.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that ordinance 43-14 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 4314 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. McLean.
No.
Mr. Lo.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
And Mr. Gordon.
No.
Ordinance 4314 has been passed on its first reading with a 6 to 2 vote. Ordinance 4414.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with West Dairy Realty Solutions.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that ordinance number 44-14 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 4414 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lo.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
And Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Ordinance 4414 has been passed on its first reading by an 8 to 0 vote. Ordinance 4514.
Authorizing the mayor to dispose of residual parcels acquired as part of the Vine Street Grade Separation Project.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that ordinance 4514 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 4514 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lo.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
And Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Ordinance 4514 has been passed on its first reading by an 8 to 0 vote. Ordinance 4614.
Authorizing and directing the auditor to pay a claim reimbursement to Shirley Freeman as a Moore obligation.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that ordinance 4614 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 4614 on its first reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I just have a couple of things to say. I commend Ms. Adams that she went out and did some research on this. And I know Ms. Freeman is happy of this. I just want to commend you that you took your time in this situation here. And I know we got, there's some money going to be given out there, but the work was done properly and honestly. And it's great. Keep up the work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Is there any further discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lo.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Mrs. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
And Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Ordinance 4614 has been passed on its first reading by an 8 to 0 vote. Ordinance 4714.
Authorizing the mayor to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for improvements to the city's 24 sanitary sewer lift stations.
Mr. President. Mr. McLean. I move that ordinance 4714 be passed on its first reading. Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 4714 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lo.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
And Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Ordinance 4714 has been passed on its first reading by an 8 to 0 vote. Mr. McLean.
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple items. First one, that I want to refer to our Utilities Department for review of the late charges on the water bill.
Motion, the second, is to refer to the utilities, the issue of late charges on water bills. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries.
And then, the Northside Neighborhood Association will hold its monthly meeting on the 18th at St. Gerard's Cafeteria at 7:00 PM. Everyone's welcome. We'll have a short meeting and then continue on. So, anything else, if you have any questions on that meeting, give me a call. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Mr. Lo.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, before we get started, I'd like to ask that, I'll pray for our Assistant Director, Tammy Hirsch, in the loss of her family, her loved one. Keep her, her family, in her in your prayers. I would also like to thank Ms. Adams for the time she spent on the Freeman Moore obligation. That's fantastic job, and that's what we're supposed to be about as councilmen and council ladies. I want to thank all who checked on me, especially Teresa and Derry, while I was going through my surgery ordeal while I was sick. Kind of kept up with me, so I appreciate that. It felt good. I would also like to be a man's man and stand corrected on the issue that I brought up. I had some information that was given to me prior to last council.[1362.93] It looked as if I took a hit at Hume Supply and the administration, so therefore I apologize. It wasn't at Hume or the administration. I was looking for clarity. I did receive that once I sat down with Mr. Elstro, and we went through paperwork and agreed on some things, disagreed on others, but at the end of the day, the paperwork was legit, it was in place, and it was the way it was supposed to be. So to Hume Supply, if you feel that I put a bruise on your name, I apologize. That's what a man does. The other thing that I would like to do is I would like to make a motion to place retire, rehire policies in HR committee.
Second.
Motion in the second is to place policies surrounding retire, rehire in the Human Resources Committee. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, the motion carries.
And I would like to schedule that meeting for March the 10th at 5:00 PM. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lowe.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
Counselor Lowe?
Yes, ma'am.
I was going to ask, under Communication Number Five, was asked that discussion be put in Human Resource Committee for opportunities for regular part-time city employment? Beyond seasonal and provisional appointments be discussed in your committee?
I want to, I want to do that at a separate time.
Okay.
I will cover that, but I'll do that at a separate time.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
That is in Human Resource from last year. I put it in Human Resource as they're doing the civil service work, because it has to be tied in with civil service.
Sure. Yep.
I didn't have that info. Okay. If that is the case, I did not have that info, and I will check with our secretary.
I'm talking about the, not the hire, rehire.
No, I know. I know. Teresa's issue. I'll check with our secretary, and we'll get a date.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Tevin.
One item this evening. During the Finance Committee meetings on the budget, some questions came up from the committee to the Utilities Department relative to specifically the backfill of positions in the utility field services. I would like to refer the issue of the, and I'm just going to refer the issue of the Utilities Department budget back to the Finance Committee for further discussion, because we are asking the Utilities Department to come back on those specific ads with timing and metrics associated with those positions, so we better understand it. But if we step back, we want to, we want to have an understanding that we can share with the constituents of the tie between the operating cost of the Utilities Department and the water and sewer rates, so we can, we can have a conversation with, with anyone who would ask us. So I move that the issue of the Utilities Department budget in general be placed back into the Finance Committee for further discussion.
Second.
The motion in the second is to refer the Utilities Budget to the Finance Committee for further discussion. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, the motion carries.
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Adams.
Thank you, Mr. President. A few things this evening. Midway East will be meeting next Thursday, the February 20th, at 7:00 PM, and looking forward to meeting all of them that evening. Mr. Elstro, I saw in our mailbox this evening a public hearing, meeting. I'm anxious, you know, excited about this. It's the Kibbe Street Project. An open house will be Thursday, February 20th, from 5:30 to 7:00, so there's no conflict with Midway East, and it will be at Freedom Elementary School at 575 Calumet. The meeting is designed as a drop-in, open-house format, and one formal presentation at 6:00 PM. I will definitely be making phone calls tomorrow to the Midway East organization to get on their phone list and notify the residents of this. And I know you have this for immediate release, plus something will be in the paper as well and the radio. Thank you. Then I would also like to thank Counselor Tevin for his leadership and guidance during the Finance Committee meetings. For four years, I've sat in the audience, seeing past members and current members on the committee, and getting the budget and going through it. It is still quite different when you're sitting here and reviewing it. So thank you for your input and guidance. And for Counselor Miles, you were kind of thrown in the fire with the Finance Committee. You asked some great questions and had some insight as well, and thank you also. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Mr. Glenn?
Yes, a couple of things here. First of all, I'd like to make a motion, prepare a resolution for Ms. Napier.
Second. Resolution of...
Her name. Of her worship. We should have done on the pad.
Memorialize.
More of the walls. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I mean, I feel weird tonight. I'm a little tired tonight. Yeah, memorialize her name.
Okay. Motion in the second is to prepare a resolution memorializing Napier. Napier. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, the motion carries.
And Mr. Horton will have everything you need right before. He will give you all the information on what we need there, okay? Thank you. Second of all, though, I'd like to congratulate the Ms. Dorothy Lovett. She did an excellent job with the kids from Martin Luther King. Ms. Miles and the mayor was there. It was great. And if you guys miss the dynamic kids, I can't believe how much they know, and it was fantastic. So I'm glad that she did a good job on that every year. Also, we need to work on some, we got a lot of bandit houses and some bandit house, some bandit lots, that kids are still walking the street, and I know some people that called me about it, but we're going to see what we can do. We might have to get some volunteers together to get them sidewalks there, and enough time to write people and say, you know, they don't live there no more, their house been tore down, but, you know, we still got a lot of them in the area that need to be taken care in that area, and I know we don't have the money to go out there and get some of that done, so we're going to work on that, because I don't like seeing the kids walk in the street, and it's very dangerous to get in the street. Also, we are working on our Hall of Fame, which will be made in March the 2nd, at New Morning Bar, New Morning, New Morning Missionary Baptist Church, and this year we will be doing that, and our guest speaker will be from Columbus, Ohio, Bishop Reed, and that will be going on. We will be selling tickets for $5, and we're going to put all that proceed into different neighborhood associations, and we're going to work on the membership process there. So I want everybody to come out to that. You will be seeing more information on that.[1417.98]